Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today's June seventh, two thousand twenty-two. It is ten AM and all members of the court are present. This meeting is hereby called to order. If everyone will please rise for the invitation by Commissioner Roberts and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear gracious Father, thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. Watch over and guide us and direct us as well about the business of this court. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is a presentation by Ralph Wallace with Texas County District Retirement System. He's the employer services representative and he's here today to present our two thousand twenty-three retirement plan with TCDRS. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. Um, I believe that Melinda handed out the packets for today's little presentation. Uh, if you would, I'm gonna be going off the, uh, the document, the colored presentation that's stapled over on the right sleeve of the, uh, the folder that y'all have. And, and I know that, uh, the county's familiar with, uh, the retirement system itself, so I'm gonna move to page six and begin by looking at the county's, uh, current benefits. And then we'll talk about, uh, cost for twenty twenty-three, if that's all right with you.
Yes, sir.
Um, all right, page six, uh, just to refresh on the current benefit levels here at the county. Currently, your employees deposit seven percent out of their paycheck, uh, each month into the plan. So they're saving out throughout their entire career, so it's an advance funded plan. And as they're doing that, the county is putting away a percentage of their payroll budget, uh, to, to match those dollars, which will, uh, which is the next, uh, bullet there. Uh, if your folks retire, the county is matching at two hundred percent or basically two dollars for every dollar the employee puts in, uh, at retirement. Uh, the way they earn that right to retire, as y'all probably remember, is through vesting. And the current vesting period here at the county is eight years of service. Doesn't necessarily mean they're eligible to retire, they've just earned that right to retire. Um, three ways they do become eligible, they gotta be age sixty, which is one way. The other way is commonly referred to as the rule of seventy-five, where your age plus your years of service, uh, equals seventy-five. So if you're fifty years old, you've been with the county for twenty-five years, you just do the math and that gets you eligible that way. Um, the third way is just thirty years of service at any age. And regardless of which one of these eligibility somebody's, uh, someone hits, uh, they've gotta be vested, they gotta have that eight years in. And depending on how old they are when they're hired at the county will depend on which one of those three they hit first. So, um, the, the last thing about that thirty years of service of any age. You know, I've, I've explained this to, to the county before, this is a savings based or a cash based plan. Y'all can have somebody come to work from road and bridge at age eighteen. And if they put in thirty years, they'd be eligible to retire at forty-eight, but it doesn't necessarily mean they can afford to. So, um, I'll give you myself as an example, I'm, I'm eligible this November, but I've got a kid that just got, going into his sophomore year in college, so I'm not going anywhere. Uh, but yeah, being, being eligible is one thing, being able to afford to is the other thing, is what I'm trying to say. Um, if you move over to the next page, page seven, just some demographic numbers on your folks. Uh, your employee's average age is about forty-eight years old. The average length of service here at the county is ten years. Uh, when it comes to the folks that have already retired from the county, uh, they're usually retiring from Hardin County around the age of sixty-two after putting in sixteen years. Uh, and the average annual benefit is a little under twenty thousand dollars, it's nineteen thousand dollars. But take a look up there above that, I said the average length of service before retirement is sixteen years. Your plans are designed to give an adequate retirement benefit to a career employee. And most of you probably would not think, you know, sixteen years is a career, they're designed to give an adequate benefit to a twenty-five year or thirty-year employee. If you take a look at the next page, it kinda explains that a little, in a little more detail. Generally, folks are gonna have three sources of retirement income. They're gonna have their TCD benefit, of course. Um, social security's gonna play a role in it. And any personal retirement savings and investments such as 401Ks or IRAs from a previous employer. When you add all those up, uh, y'all have probably heard me say this before, but financial planners are gonna tell you that you need to put away enough money while you're working to be able to replace somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy to a hundred percent of your final salary to sustain you in retirement. And what y'all are looking at on page eight are the replacement ratios based on just the TCD benefit after an employee retires from Hardin County after so many years. So, for example, if somebody just came in here and put in ten years, they started at age fifty-five, you know, they've usually worked somewhere else most of their life before they came to work for the county. And they leave at sixty-five, well, they're looking at replacing about twenty-two percent of their final salary from their TCD benefit. Whereas if you look on the right side of that graph, you know, your twenty-five and thirty-year employees are playing, are gonna replace somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy to eighty-five percent of their final salary, just from the TCD benefit, not the social security and the other stuff, okay? So that's what I meant a while ago when I was talking about that design for, for a career employee, does that make sense? Moving over to page nine, let's talk about, uh, the cost the county, uh, has to pay to fund these benefits. And, and this, this rate is calculated every year, varies by actuaries every year. Uh, they, they look at plan experience, they take a look at what happened last year in twenty twenty-one when determining the cost for twenty twenty-three, it's always a year behind. They wanna look at a full year of plan experience. And they look at things such as how did investments do, were there any big demographic changes at the county? Uh, has your payroll been growing like it has been in the past? Things of that nature, that's why that rate's not always cut and drawn to the county, that minimum required rate. And so going into next year, the minimum required percentage of your payroll to fund those current benefits will be twelve point oh-two percent. And as y'all know, y'all have been sending a higher elective rate, something above that the last few years. You're currently sending fifteen point three-one percent of your payroll. And it's kinda, uh, kinda compared to like making a little extra mortgage payments on things. Because part of your rate goes to fund the future benefits that your employees are expected to earn throughout their career. And the other part goes to pay down any unfunded liability the county has. And anything you're paying above and beyond your minimum required rate is designed to pay off that liability. Part of that, just the required rate's designed to pay it off in twenty years, but if you're paying a little extra, you wanna pay it off a little quicker, and that's currently what the county's doing right now.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
That's your question. That's, is that based on if nothing changes? And what I mean by that is, assuming we don't give raises, it'll be paid off in twenty years. But when we give raises, the retirement goes up.
Are you talking about cost of living increases for retirees, Commissioner?
For, uh, our employees.
Well, if they put in, if your, because all we see are deposits every year. So if your employees are putting in seven percent of their paycheck and they're getting a little bit bigger paycheck, they're putting in more dollars, which means more dollars have to be matched down the road.
Right, because my, my concern is, when I got elected, uh, I found out that we had a seven million dollar unfunded liability.
Right.
Today, that's over eight million.
Mm-hmm.
Been on the court twelve years.
Right.
It's not been paid down. You're saying twenty.
Right.
I've been on here twelve and it's increased over a million dollars.
Correct.
And I'm trying to find out why.
The main reason it went up is because last year, the, our long-term investment return assumption had been eight percent for, since I've been here, and I've been here sixteen years at that point. And the board, our board and directors, which is made up of judges and commissioners, uh, on the advice of our actuaries and our investment folks, they're looking into the future and they're not seeing that we're gonna make eight percent for the future. So they reduced that to seven and a half, the reason why they did that is because you see what's going on right now in the country. And so if it, if the long-term investment return assumption is expected to be lower, then it's gonna cost, it's gonna create a liability and everybody got hammered on that last year.
Well, my, my question is, we're making decisions on, on behalf of the employees and the public.
Right.
I don't think it's accurate to say it will be paid down in twenty years. I think maybe a more detailed explanation per county.
Okay.
And then specifically Hardin County may help. Because, uh, we're gonna be three percent over the minimum, but in all likelihood, that won't even make a dent in the unfunded liability. Because when I looked at the figures that were sent over, I think last week, uh, we've been right at seven million or eight million for the last twelve years.
Right.
And at some point, that has to be paid down or we have to, uh, change our, uh, match ratio, is that correct?
If it comes to the point to where the county cannot afford the current benefit levels, you do have that option every year to reduce that, to reduce benefits.
Right, and I bring that up, uh, so that everyone understands that when they make that recommendation to us, it is really a recommendation. For instance, we go from two to one to one and a half to one in order to decrease that eight million dollars. And if we don't take some type of action to honestly pay it down, there could be a time in the future where we look to have to change the two to one to one and a half to one or one to one, that's not saying I'm recommending that. So when y'all leave the courtroom today, don't say Commissioner Kirkland was trying to change our retirement. I'm trying to pay down the unfunded liability. Hardin County owes TCDRS eight million dollars. Supposedly to be paid off in twenty years, and in twelve years, it's gone up over a million dollars. And it's not need to decrease one cent in twenty years, in twelve years that I've been on this court. And I've had these conversations privately, but I think it's time to have the discussion publicly on how we're gonna pay off that eight million dollars. And I think that we should do it sooner than later, because I don't think kicking the can down the road is gonna help us. And I just want people to understand, they come in real low-key and make these recommendations of changing our rate, but they're dead serious about us changing our rate to pay off that unfunded liability, is that correct?
Yes, y'all are, and I'm gonna show you another document here in a second, we can look at it right now, pull that second document out, uh, that looks like this. And what you're looking at there is based on the latest actuarial valuation from twenty twenty-one. Remember that y'all's minimum rate is twelve point oh-two going into next year and you're sending us fifteen point three-one. Now, you mentioned a while ago, a- and I wanna point this out that-
Can you remind me what it was last year, wasn't it around fourteen something?
Uh, thirteen point four-seven.
Okay, I'm sorry, the year before that, wasn't it fourteen something then? Seems like it was just around around fourteen.
You know, Judge, I don't even have it to be honest with you.
All right.
If I can get it for you.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, you know, you mentioned a while ago, Commissioner, about that current unfunded liability, what causes liabilities? Okay, well, if you remember back when I started, I, I started here in oh-five and I guess I started coming seeing y'all to every year, like in oh-six, oh-seven. And for a while there, the county had been doing, adopting cost of living increases for retirees and been doing them on a regular basis.
And to be accurate, it was seventeen years in a row. So we were financing about three hundred thousand for seventeen continuous years.
Right, instead of, uh, pre-funding them upfront, debt was getting stacked on the debt. And so, and then here comes the oh-eight recession on top of all that. A lot of that still has to do with where you're at right now, but-
I wanna say too, I think that there was a decision made years ago, probably fourteen years ago, somewhere in that, in that timeframe, to increase the,
Match.
Match from one and a half to two, and that got financed as well.
Right, and it was retroactive, correct?
Correct, if you go retroactive, you haven't funded the money those employees had contributed in advance.
If I remember right, the one and a half to two costs us about three million and the COLAS costs us about three million. I could give or take on either side, but that's just what I remember.
Yeah.
And so out of about that eight million dollar unfunded liability, then it was the, uh, the COLAS and the retroactive two to one.
Oh-eight recessions, or recession, same of that nature.
I have another question for you.
Yeah.
How does, um, so we talked about employee raises, that changes the game. When we add new additional employees, that will also change the game, right, on retirement?
If you increase, I mean, you're looking at new demographics possibly. Uh, you're looking at an increased payroll, if, I'm assuming, if you're adding new employees. If you were a small entity, like a little district, a little water district, for example, and you have five employees and you doubled those employees, that has a bigger impact because it's, you have more volatility one way or the other because you're a smaller entity. How much more, uh, people are y'all thinking about adding?
I don't know of any this year, but I know we have, uh, just a few, I mean, we're very conservative. But that's a question I have, and then how does overtime impact the retirement? Because if an employee is making time and a half.
Right.
Then the seven percent is more.
Right.
Which makes our match more.
Correct. Has this been something that's been going on for the last three or four years?
Yes, the overtime.
Okay, the reason I ask this is because when the actuaries make their calculation, calculations, they base, they're basing future payroll growth on what's been going on here the last four years.
Okay.
So that's already taken into consideration.
That's good news to hear.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, but getting back to that unfunded liability you're talking about, you know, I mentioned a while ago, your minimum required rate is designed to pay that liability off in twenty years. So that eight million, four hundred and ninety thousand, whatever, or six twenty-three, I know what you're saying, that there's gonna be a liability every year, but that figure is gonna get paid off in twenty years. Now, let's look at this year, look what the market's doing, what inflation's doing this year. Will there be, if it continues this way through the end of the year and everybody gets a hit on investments, then there'll be a liability created as a result of that. And whatever that liability is will get paid off over twenty years. But that eight point four is gonna be paid off over twenty years, is what I'm trying to say. It's a layered deal, but, but that's gonna get paid off in twenty.
So if, if, but it, what I'm saying is, and it's just conversation, if that's accurate, then when we started off at seven million twelve years ago, we should be at three and a half million today and we're not.
If the world hadn't changed up and down since then, sure, you bet.
Right, and I'm just trying to have this discussion with employees in here that understand that this thing is not decreasing as the way he presents it to us, not saying it's Ralph's fault. But the, the, the fact remains is that the county has a tremendous unfunded liability to our retirement system. And the greatest impact is, is if we go, if we make, and it's just my opinion, if we make lump sum payments every year, if you did two hundred and fifty thousand a year, it takes sixteen years to pay off the eight million. And, uh, or that we reduce the amount of match, which I don't think anybody on the court is for. And so I'm not saying I'm far, I'm just saying the reality of what we have to vote on in order to get rid of the eight million. And I think we have to get rid of the eight million. I think we owe it to ourselves and our citizens to do it.
I agree. I think if we look at this though, our required match is coming down each year. So I know that you told Melinda a week or two ago that in two thousand twenty-nine, if we kept paying the fifteen point three-one percent, that in twenty twenty-nine, we would be at zero on our unfunded liability. And I guess that's because our required rate in two thousand twenty-nine would be eight point three and we'd be paying almost twice that in, uh, contribution.
Yeah, look at the next page on that document, Judge, the asset and liability projection. And that's basically showing if y'all kept doing the fifteen point three-one. Now, keep in mind, this is the long-term expectations and this is-
It's based on what's going on today.
Right, you're gonna have good years and bad years in between, you know? But the actuaries can base, are only basing this on expected returns over the long haul, not what happens, it's not a knee-jerk thing, it's a, it, and I'll go back to investment returns, for example. Even though we lowered our investment return assumption down to seven and a half, we've still been doing a little over nine percent for the last thirty-five years. But you're gonna have good years and bad years and it's, it's a long-haul philosophy. But yeah, if you look at that asset and liability projection based on actuarial assumptions, long-term, then if y'all kept doing what you're doing, it's got y'all getting to that hundred percent funded and paying off that liability around twenty twenty-nine. Once again, I'll give you last year as an example. Last year, we ended north of twenty percent on investment returns. It's been a crazy few years, y'all know that.
But my, my only concern, and I feel like I need to address it, we've heard the same statement
Mm-hmm.
the twelve years I've been on the court. It has not been my experience that it's going down. And that's my only concern.
Okay.
I feel it's important to bring that out because we can look at a graph like we look at and take no extra, uh, no extra decision to pay this thing down. And who's not to say we're not at nine million next year? And you come back in and show us the same graph and tell us the same thing that's gonna happen in twenty years and it, and it's not happening. And so what I'm saying in this hearing is that we hear this every year, but our experience is not what you're saying. Now, again, that's not personal.
Oh, yeah, I get, I understand.
I think that's, uh, very important, just like, uh, Commissioner Kirkland says for us to get this down. But I would like to say in front of the employees and open records that the last vote that was taken on giving retirees a raise, I was the only one that voted against it, so.
Correct. Well, and, and after that situation, if y'all, y'all remember, uh, the county did another COLA after that, but they prefunded it.
Correct.
Which is why I, I try to tell all my counties to do now, especially after the oh-eight recession. Uh, I learned a lesson from that, because I'm like, listen, if you can, if y'all can afford to give your retirees a cost of living increase and you can afford to do it, it's a wonderful thing to do for them and help them with inflation. But the money's gotta come from somewhere to pay for that COLA.
Correct, cause if it, let's just say it was three hundred thousand to give a COLA for retirees, what, the benefit was what, about five dollars a month to take home? It wasn't much, like five dollars, and it cost the county three hundred thousand or two hundred thousand for that.
Yeah.
I think I've asked you in the past, Ralph, and I don't remember, uh, say an employee leaves before they're vested, say they leave at six years.
Mm-hmm.
They can take the money they put into the, the system with them. The two to one match that the county puts in stays in there, we don't get that back.
Correct.
Does that go toward unfunded or not?
It, well, it, and here's another thing, the actuaries take a look at your, your employees. And of course statistically, your younger folks are living more for the day. A lot of them will work two, three, four, five years, then they'll quit and go to another job and they'll pull their money out. And the actuaries take that into their assumption, they think, well, you know, if these twenty to twenty-five year olds quit in the next four or five years, then it's all likely that they're gonna pull their money out and that's taken into consideration when calculating that rate every year. But if y'all have more people do it than what the actuary is expected, then that's considered an actuarial gain for the county and the answer to your question is yes on that. It stays in y'all's pot and it can help reduce rates on that.
Now, the percentage we're paying is actually going to those who have retired. That's what's helping fund their retirement.
Correct.
I'm just trying to make sure that I understand, like, we're paying, what is it, how much is it?
Fifteen point three.
Okay.
Yeah, your fifteen point three-one is going toward pre-funding the benefits, right? Pre-funding the benefits that your folks
Are taking.
Are putting in right now, yeah.
Putting in or taking out?
No, putting in, your employees, okay? When your folks were, that are already retired, they're getting what they're getting, they got what they got, unless the county gives them a COLA.
But-
Cause it was all advanced funded.
I think I would say this differently, I think the twelve point something percent, twelve point oh-two is funding what everybody's putting in today and the extra over that, the three point five-one percent is funding whatever's going out in the past. Is that more accurate or wrong?
Uh, if you take a look on page one, Judge, of that same document, there are the projections are on, go down to retirement plan funding. And you've got something called a normal cost rate and a unfunded accrued actuarial liability rate, okay?
Okay.
That seven point three-nine part of that, uh, twelve point oh-two, that minimum rate for next year, that's paying for the future cost of benefits, okay?
Okay.
That four point six-three is going to pay off your unfunded liability. So anything above that four point six-three, you know, so if you do the math, the difference between the twelve point oh-two and the fifteen point three-one, add that to the four point six-three, does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
So once again, like I said, the minimum required rate is designed to pay off the liability that you currently have based on the latest valuation over twenty years.
I also just saw this at the bottom of page one, their funded ratio is at eighty-eight point four percent.
Correct.
And y'all want us at eighty or above, or that's what the auditors?
No, I mean, there's no recommended, um, funded ratio, it's in the eye of the county commissioners courts. But I can tell you this, that most bond rating agencies like Fitch or S and P will tell you that plans like y'all's, if they're eighty percent funded or better, they're in pretty good shape. And y'all are sitting at eighty-eight. You know, another question I get asked quite often is, you know, well, what's this gonna end up costing us, you know, when it's all said and done? And my answer is, well, if y'all can tell me when that last retiree gets that last check, I'll tell you exactly what it's gonna cost you, so.
So no, no one that's going, I can't believe he hasn't said nothing, but he's, he can't wait.
I'm at that point.
I just want to make sure, in case y'all can't see it on the screen, that since, uh, twenty fifteen, we have paid seven hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars more than we're required to pay towards our unfunded liability. But as Commissioner said, it still keeps growing. And so that's why we wanted Ralph to kinda explain how do we get down to one hundred percent funded? And it, it happens over the next-
Yeah, so for example-
Basically ninety years, whenever our required rate, rate comes down, if we leave it at the, at the, uh, extra contribution, that's how we pay it down.
Just, just to go back again on that current unfunded liability of the eight point four million, let's say twenty twenty-two ends like its beginning with the market inflation and investments take a, uh, a hit, for example. And let's say that eighty-four nine, or eight million, four hundred and nine, whatever, y'all get your unfunded next year and it's nine million, okay? Well, that eighty-four nine is still paying, getting paid off in twenty years, starting in twenty-three. That one million dollars that was added to it is getting paid off in twenty years, starting in twenty twenty-four. So that's why I was trying to clarify that.
Well, and the Fed made an interesting statement last week that we're, uh, headed into a, uh, economic hurricane season. And I listened to that yesterday and they said that, uh, they just don't know what category hurricane it's gonna be that's gonna hit the financial markets. And our retirement's invested in paper, correct?
Yeah, well, it's a diversified portfolio, if you take a look, uh, in, in what I would recommend, if y'all are interested in, in the investment philosophy and seeing how the portfolio is diversified, uh, I would highly recommend you go to the investment section of the website because it only talks about the investment philosophy, but it goes into each allocation and explains to you the percentage of that allocation and why we're in it. You know, of course, any financial planner will tell you that, you know, you don't put all your eggs in one basket because you're gonna have some allocations that are gonna have bad years and some allocations to offset, help mitigate those other allocations, but I would recommend that you, you look at that, that website or that webpage.
And the conference is good, I always like to hear from y'all's economists.
Yeah, the economists are good, our, uh, investment director always has some great information, so. By the way, speaking of that, uh, it's July the twenty-first and twenty-second and we would love to have y'all come to, so.
Where's it at?
It's in Austin. Yeah, I know, I, I get that every once in a while, yeah, yeah. Yep, put that aside, it's at the AT&T Conference Center over on UT campus.
This, uh, packet that you gave us, you, can you send that to me electronically?
I can.
And I'll send it out to all the elected and appointed officials as well. And, uh, does anybody here have any questions for us on the court or otherwise? Anything else you wanna say?
No, um, there's some other, you know, pages on that presentation, you know, y'all can just look through it, um, you know, you're talking about- there's some other, you know, pages on that presentation, you know, y'all can just look through it, um, you know, you're talking about investments on that presentation, I think it's page twenty-one. Those are the allocations, I mean, I'm not gonna go to each one of them, but uh just just to let y'all know, you know, like I mentioned a while ago, it's a long-term investment philosophy, it's it's not something, we're designed, this it's designed to do good in really great years and not terrible when you have a bad year, it it's just a, it's a marathon for us as far as our investment philosophy.
Cuz T C D R S as a whole is what percent funded, ninety something, ninety seven percent?
To the aggregate, we're about ninety.
About ninety?
Yeah.
So it's healthy. But I I know we're wrapping up, so you gave a forecast that we could be at nine million.
I'm, I guess, I just threw that out.
Just threw that out.
I have no idea, I'm just, I was just giving it as an example.
Right, and my, what I would like to say is, I've had private discussions for twelve years about this. And we've heard this same presentation on the court with the exception of COVID one year, that has always told us this, and we continue to see it increase. If it was seven million twelve years ago, it's eight point four million today. And I just want everyone to know, it's not decreasing, it is increasing. Even though the paperwork says in theory, it should be paid off in twenty years. We've not even paid half of it down.
This number, this number.
Right, but the seven million from twelve years ago.
Is being paid off over twenty years.
But it's not three and a half million today, it's eight point four million.
Right.
And in theory, it's been twelve years.
Right.
And it's not come down, it's gone up. And I just, I bring that up so that everybody's aware of it, so that one day, people don't go, we have a ten million dollar unfunded liability. That it, this is a real liability that we have, and it's not going down, and and on paperwork it does. But in reality, it don't, cuz we owe T C D R S more today than we did twelve years ago, and we're paying more. But we started that in twenty sixteen, I believe.
Right.
So if you look at twenty fifteen to now, it 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 should have gone down, but the the increase is about two hundred, three hundred thousand. And in twenty twenty, it was nine point three million. And it's gone down to eight point four, and then depending on what the stock market does under the current administration. Thank you, Commissioner, any other commissioners have anything? Any other officials present have any questions or anything to say about retirement?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming here.
Good to see you all in. And I get the In front of people again.
Yeah. Whenever I get the uh presentation from Mr. Wallace, I'll send that out to everybody. Item four, presentation of salary committee recommendations to the court by the committee chair, Commissioner L W Cooper Junior. Then the court will consider and possibly approve any and all recommendations made by the salary committee regarding the setting of certain hourly wages and salaries and changes in certain types of personnel. Mr. Cooper, if you don't mind, I probably should have told you I was gonna do this, would you mind just stating who else on that committee?
Uh, yes, Judge, myself, Sheriff Davis, Melinda Harrington in the H R, Trey Brothers, Constable in Heron Coontz, Ms. Charlotte Cook, our tax collector, and Ms. Debbie McWilliams, our treasurer.
I know y'all spent a bunch of time on this, and I just wanna tell you again how much I appreciate all the time that Commissioner Cooper and the committee has spent on this, and we'll continue to spend on looking at salaries and making recommendations. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Judge, uh, first off, I would like to say, uh, and I think I advised the court this before we did go out for uh bids for our company, our companies to come in and do this, and they were extremely high. So I thought uh that, you know, we we would take this on ourself with agreement with the rest of the committee, and and I appreciate, like the judge said, I appreciate the help of of the committee. And I think we've done a good job, and we're continuing to, uh, there's still gonna be other recommendations come up for this current budget uh that's not included in this presentation. Uh, one area that we did not get to address as of yet, we will before uh his budget workshop, and that's the sheriff's department, uh, and the sheriff is working on that to uh to get us information. If if y'all would look, the second to the last paragraph down there, I think the court has already addressed uh these three items, uh, and basically, uh, what we would like to say is, these three items will take effect prior to the new budget. Some of them might have already taken effect, but uh I know the uh the new court coordinator, uh, the court has already taken that up by the recommendation of the uh salary committee on page, and also two department heads that uh fall under the jurisdiction of of the county judge. His recommendation to the committee and the committee's approval was the H R director, uh, entry level pay at forty-eight thousand after ninety days, fifty thousand, and the maintenance supervisor, entry level forty-eight and after ninety days, fifty, so if those ninety days is up or coming up, then this uh recommendation is to go ahead and take effect prior to the next budget. Everything else on this uh list will be, if if approved by the court, will be recommended to take effect in our new budget in October. And I'll just uh briefly step through this, uh, recommendation is changing uh some some job uh titles, starting with the treasury department, changing the clerk to a treasury deputy, changing the first assistant to a chief treasury deputy, and the tax assessor collector, change deputy clerk to tax deputy, change administrative chief deputy to chief tax deputy, and change administrative assistant chief deputy to assistant chief tax deputy. County clerks will remain deputy clerks, the district clerks will remain deputy clerks. The H R director has requested, and the committee agreed, to change the clerk there to H R administrative clerk. And the purchasing agent clerk from purchase, from a regular clerk to purchasing administrative clerk. And the sheriff's office changing that to sheriff administrative clerk. And then the floodplain office to floodplain administrative clerk. Now, these uh are just title changes at the request of that department or or department head or elected official. There is no uh, no uh increase in pay or anything other than what the department head or 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 uh elected official recommend uh within their within their budget or what we give across the board. What we do uh recommend changing uh salaries on is starting pay for all of the regular clerks throughout the county regardless of title uh to a entry level of sixteen dollars an hour. And I think if I remember correctly, uh, the committee members could could tell me if I'm wrong, it affects about twenty or twenty-one personnel throughout the county, and Ms. uh McKinney with the auditor's office has put together a a form on the back of this, showing you the breakdown of that and what it would cost. Also included in the recommendation for uh salary increases is bringing our temporary and part-time personnel up to fifteen dollars per hour. And it also uh shows on that back part, back there, uh, exactly the breakdown on that. Uh, the committee chose to to start with the clerks because that was, seemed to be the majority of of county employees that was at a low rate of pay and had not been adjusted in the past, so that's why we we come up with this, and I will say this too, uh, we we've done a lot of research on on getting uh other county salary uh pay scales and comparing it, and overall, comparing our county to other counties, we're sitting pretty good at pay, especially for elected officials. Uh, which we did look into that as well. So uh, I think the committee has done a great job, and we're gonna continue to to meet even after this, so uh, but that's the re- recommendation uh from the committee, any commissioners have any questions?
I appreciate all the work you've done.
Yes. I think the uh total number, if I'm correct, is seventy-two thousand, five hundred, twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents, wh- which is what it would cost to cover the uh suggested increases of pay for these uh personnel. And Judge, I guess, I'm looking at how we have this listed online, I don't, uh, should I put that in form of a motion?
Yes, sir, before you do, I wanna talk about the first uh part of your presentation on the three people, the human resources director, maintenance supervisor, and the eighty-eight district judge court coordinator. Uh, we haven't taken any action on any of these. Uh, the H R director is at fifty, is that right, Melinda? And that was already in the budget, and uh, so I I've got her at fifty, she's already, had already made her ninety days at the time that she got uh that promotion. But the maintenance supervisor, that hasn't been done yet, so I'm gonna ask the court if y'all agree with the recommendation, if we'll take action on that today.
Okay, so so
And set him at fifty.
So what you're saying out of these three, because the district judge did have money to cover his.
He did, but he agreed to drop it to the uh same uh rate that the court coordinator was making in the eight, in the uh three fifty-six, so we didn't have to take any action on that.
So out of all these three, the only uh increase or or change to the budget would be the maintenance supervisor, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, I think he's at forty-seven and some change now, and if everybody agrees, if we could go ahead and put him at fifty to be at the same uh, same level as the H R director's uh starting pay for a uh unappointed official is the request I'm making, the the others I think are fine until uh, till we set them in the next budget.
So is that the motion?
Yes.
Second. Second.
All right, any discussion, we have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, signed by Commissioner Roberts to take action on the presentation made by Commissioner Cooper on behalf of the salary committee with the additional request that I have to change the maintenance supervisor's salary effective immediately. Any other discussion, and the salary, uh, I'm sorry, the maintenance supervisor will stay on hourly, he won't be an exempt employee. Any other discussion?
Judge, I want, might add one thing.
Yes, sir.
There there has been a request by the county clerk to change job titles of one of her personnel. Isn't that correct? You called me after.
Well, she's an election clerk.
Okay, okay, so that might be something that the the uh committee will address when we meet again, but I just wanted to bring that out, you have made a request to change the the job title of of one, we will address that at our next meeting, so.
She's a deputy clerk now, but you wanna change her to an election clerk? And then increase the pay like a dollar?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, and you have it in your budget to move it?
I do, because I didn't replace Tracy, and she wouldn't, she's not making as much as I was as a chief deputy.
We can address that in her her budget as far as the pay, because the committee is not recommending that, because we haven't looked at that, but I I would just wanted to bring back, there would be one more change as far as job title, because you've made that request, and we'll look into that when we have our next meeting. All right.
Sounds good, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes. Thank y'all again for all the time you should spend on this, I know it's not been easy. It's taken a lot of time, and it's gonna take more time, so thank y'all for agreeing to do that. Item five, budget workshop, discuss the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three proposed budget expenditures for the following offices and departments, and uh let me get that open and we'll start on that, in fact, I'm gonna skip down to item eight unless uh anybody objects to that. Which is the county judge's budget. It's uh, as y'all know, and I'm not gonna go through a long dissertation about this, but it's my duty to propose a budget each year and defy it by July the thirtieth with the county clerk. Uh, over the past few years, we have not had uh big budget workshops inviting all the departments in, all we've done is asked the departments who are requesting an increase in their overall bottom line to come to a budget workshop. However, I thought it was important to ask everybody to come, everybody doesn't have to come, but uh we'd like for you to, if you want to, and let's talk about your budgets in an effort to uh, to make sure that we include what you need for next year, or what you think you need, and to make any cuts where you think you can make cuts, and the reason that, main reason I wanna see us make cuts to any of the uh maintenance and operations expenditures is to try to give some relief to the employees. Y'all heard Ralph talk about it, we've been talking about it in a few, in pre- in uh previous meetings. You hear it on the news, it's a topic of discussion every day about the inflation rates and how much gas and food and everything else is going up. So uh, I would like to see us give at least a three percent increase to the employees, and if we can do more, I'm hoping that we can do that. And the only way to do that is to try to make some cuts elsewhere so that we can provide more relief to the employees. So in an effort to uh, and if anybody wants to make a statement before we start, feel free.
I agree with you, Mr. Judge.
All right, so uh, in an effort to try to set the example, I'm gonna start with the county judge's budget, and I start with the uh auto allowance line item, and what I'm gonna say about auto allowances, the uh commissioners' court, the constables, and the J P's all receive a vehicle allowance. I'm going to delay discussing vehicle allowances, and what I'd like to do is uh make a commitment to the court and the other officials that we will uh discuss what we're gonna do about vehicle allowances and vehicles no later than our July the twelfth budget workshop. Sooner if we can, because I'm looking at some options there, and just for the sake of transparency, those options are either leasing some vehicles, increasing our allowance rate to cover the uh amount that uh fuel and oil have increased over the past year, and it looks like it's gonna continue to increase, or maybe purchasing vehicles, uh, and financing those so that those annual rates don't increase too much, any at all if we can, but if they're gonna increase, hopefully not much. So those are the things I'm looking at, and I don't have that ready, but I will have it ready by the end of this month or the very early of uh July, and and we'll discuss all that then.
I will be out the twenty-first.
Okay. Uh, June? Yes, I've got it right there, yes, sir. So we'll either take that up on the twenty-eighth or at our next budget workshop on July the twelfth.
And the only other thing, like I called Ken this morning, cuz we order a truck and we have a P O for it, and he's supposed to get back with me, uh, huge delay in getting vehicles, just so that we're aware of that. Because what I've asked him, Misty, is if it won't be in before October, if they'd let us know so we can release that P O, and I could utilize that money somewhere else this year.
I ordered mine in November, and still.
Still waiting, so.
Well, we ordered a pool car last October, and it was just delivered last Friday.
Come on, that's good news.
Yeah. So uh, something else we'll have to take into consideration as well. So again, starting with the the next line item, office supplies, I've just looked at what uh we've spent over the last few years. I budgeted at thirty-five hundred, spent uh twenty-four hundred and twelve last year, so I've lowered that five hundred dollars to three thousand. And if anybody wants to make any statement at all, just raise your hand, and I'd be glad to hear anything anybody has to say. If anybody thinks I cut too much, let me know, I don't think that's gonna be the case, and if you think I didn't cut enough, or need to look at something I didn't uh look at, please tell me. Our visiting judge line item uh has gone over budget in two thousand twenty-one by seven hundred fifty, uh, seven hundred fifty-three dollars, however, we've not uh had any visiting judges this year. I'm gonna leave that at two thousand, just in case we have any that come up next year, and uh if I remember right, this visiting judge that we had to pay for in two thousand twenty-one, that was a statutory probate judge that we had to hire, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And uh, anytime that a lawyer requests a statutory probate judge, I have to grant that. Travel and training expenses, uh, I lowered that by a thousand dollars from twenty-five hundred to fifteen hundred, again, based on the history. Office equipment rentals, that's that's gonna end up being around two thousand dollars a year, so I've I've left that. Vessalaneous, uh, I left that at a thousand dollars, I've already spent eight hundred and ten this year.
Judge?
Yes, sir. Two thousand, I spent fifteen hundred this year and I left it at two thousand.
Okay.
And the law books, I usually use the internet, so I don't, I lowered that to zero, I don't have anything in law books. So I decreased my budget overall by sixteen hundred, can y'all see that? Better? Well, I can increase it, but then you don't see that at the top, but that's all right. Is that better? Any comments or questions regarding the county judge's budget? All right, then we'll move to item eight, the R R and B one department, Golden Bridge one. In the R and B one department, Commissioner Cooper submitted his budget worksheet to the uh, to myself and the auditor's office. He made one request for an increase, and that was in fuel and oil, from twenty thousand to thirty thousand. If you look at his year-to-date expenses as of May twenty-sixth, it was eighteen thousand, five eighty-two, he's probably one of the few that's under budget. But he's gonna go over budget before the end of this year, and I think Alvin, if I'm not mistaken, or if not, it was someone else told me in the office about ten minutes before we started this meeting, that the forecast he saw on the news this morning was gas at one to six dollars a gallon. So, I fully agree with the request to go to thirty thousand. So I fully agree with the request to go to thirty thousand from twenty thousand. From the commissioner, let me also comment on these two items here. These two items in red are made by the auditor. Candace did call me a few minutes before the budget workshop this morning. I think she wants to move this forty-five thousand back up to three fifty-one and change the name of that item. And so I told her that whatever she wants to do there, we'll do it either during the workshop, if she wants to bring it up now, or we can do it after. But the amount's gonna stay the same unless there's any.
Just flip-flopping it up.
Yeah, I think it's gonna say, well, I'm not sure, so I don't know what she said.
Well, we still have both three fifty-one and four fifty-one.
It'll all go back to one. Instead of being at four fifty-one, it'll be in the three fifty-one line item, and change the name.
Just moving it up?
Yes, sir. And Candace, if you wanna speak, just unmute yourself and speak, and if you don't, that's okay too. We can address it later.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
It will say vehicle equipment expense.
So it'll go to three fifty-one, and it'll say vehicle slash equipment expense?
Yes, sir. And then we'll just do away with the four fifty-one account.
Okay, and you'll combine those two amounts and put them in three fifty-one?
Yes, sir.
Any comments on that?
Hi, I'd like to comment on my budget.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Thank you, Candace.
First off, thank you, Judge, for reducing your budget. I feel bad that I did not reduce mine, because I'm all about getting the employees' raise too, so I'm gonna withdraw my request for an increase and stay the same.
Do you have some other line items you wanna cut? Or you wanna, you wanna take the thirty thousand back to twenty?
No, I'm gonna take my ten thousand dollar increase in fuel back and just stay the same. I can move some money around maybe, but I'm gonna leave my budget the same as it was last year, as far as bottom number.
All right, so I've changed that fuel and oil line item from thirty thousand back to twenty thousand.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion regarding the Roden Bridge one budget? All right, then we'll move to Roden Bridge two. Commissioner Kirkandall submitted a budget worksheet, and he called me this morning to let me know about an error, so let me find that and fix it. Which line item is it?
It was the four fifty-one. When they were combined, it should have been one hundred thousand five hundred. It was one-ten, and so it was in, ninety-five hundred should be removed from that.
All right, so if I change that to one hundred thousand five hundred, that's your request for vehicle, well, it's actually gonna go to three fifty-one, but it'll be vehicle slash equipment expense.
And that'd be currently what I have.
Okay. Got you. All right, and then you had included an increase for fuel and oil from fifty-five thousand five hundred to sixty-five thousand?
Yes, sir, and as of May twenty-sixth, we'd already spent sixty-one two thirty-six. So we're already over there.
Yes, sir. And then you moved eighty thousand from materials and supplies to equipment purchase?
Yep. And I need to replace two dump trucks that allow me to be able to do it, one per gear, for two years, and then by that third year, I'll need to replace a motor grader on that third gear. And that, that allows me to do that without asking for an increase in that line item, because I'm just moving money around. And then on the equipment notes, the twenty thousand differential for the new grade oil should be a total of about thirty thousand. And that's just equipment note and interest, and the fuel to take care of that. And I'm like, Commissioner Cooper, I will be looking for additional line items to, to cut. Once we're able to start purchasing new equipment, the maintenance will come down. And so even though it's budgeted, I don't foresee us spending that. So the end of year should be, should be under.
All right. So on the correction that I made to line item four fifty-one, if Candace wasn't here, I'd blame her for that, but I probably made that mistake. So that's corrected, and if you're Am I not sharing my screen? Sorry. Me too. Can't believe the sheriff didn't tell me. All right. Is that better? Can y'all see that? I corrected this line item, the ten thousand, it said one hundred and ten thousand, I reduced it to one hundred thousand five hundred, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then these are estimated until we get the actual numbers from the auditor's office. And so that's an overall increase of thirty-one thousand seven fifty-eight. And then that's estimating that interest. And I had twenty thousand to the note, the way you asked.
Right, I know you want to, I'll, if it's okay, I'll, I'll continue to take a look as we're going through budget hearings, and I may make a recommendation before that.
Sure, sounds good. Any other comments regarding Roden Bridge two? We'll move on to Roden Bridge two. All right. Mr. Young had requested a, an increase in the fuel and oil line item from fifty thousand to sixty thousand. And then the materials and supplies, an increase from four hundred and eighty thousand, which actually, that was the original budget. The amended budget's three hundred and eighty-nine thousand four eighteen. She's requesting that to go up to five hundred and thirty thousand. And then again, just in, as in the others, that sixty-one thousand eight sixty-six is gonna be moved up to the three fifty-one line item, so we'll take care of that later. So that's an overall increase to Roden Bridge three department of sixty thousand three seventy. Commissioner Young?
Uh, yes, sir. During redistricting, I did not do any budget amendments to get any more funds for materials. We gained eight and a half miles, which doesn't seem like a lot, but with this budget that I already have, only have enough money to overlay three miles of road, and I have almost two hundred miles of road. When we're overlaying, we're doing all of the drainage work, that's what I was elected to do, was a lot of work on the drainage, and culverts are very expensive, they keep going up. And so I'm asking for an additional fifty thousand because of the redistricting and just the cost of materials.
Do you have, have you seen any line items that you might be able to trim?
I can look at what we've spent, but I'm already over in a lot of line items. I ordered a dump truck in November, we haven't received that, so I have, anytime that one breaks down, which I have one in the shop right now, I'm having to rent one. I've spent almost ten thousand dollars in the last two months just renting a dump truck. And I have to have it to be able to do the, the work on the ditches and, and the roads. So I will look at it, and like Commissioner Kirkandall said, before we're finished, I'll submit it again.
Thank you. Any other comments on the Roden Bridge three department? All right, we'll move on to Roden Bridge four. And Roden Bridge four, I, I know we got a new worksheet here that Alvin gave us this morning, so we have two items at the bottom regarding equipment notes and equipment note interest that's not included in the packet that she originally received, or that's available to the public on that. We're gonna talk about it here in just a minute. Alvin, you had requested a ten thousand dollar increase in your fuel and oil, but you emailed me Friday and said you could probably reduce that to seven thousand. Do you still agree with that?
Yes.
So instead of thirty-five thousand, you wanna change that to thirty-two thousand?
No, twenty-eight. Thirty-five minus seven, twenty-eight.
Well, you minus three, but I'll take it to twenty-eight if you want me to. If you're gonna add seven thousand to twenty-five thousand, wouldn't that be thirty-two thousand?
That's true.
All right, you wanna make it twenty-eight thousand?
We can do twenty-eight.
You think so?
Uh, yeah.
I agree when you look at your year-to-date.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, that's that big, yeah, you know. I'm looking at Ernie.
Yeah, I was looking, yeah, it's, 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 you know, it's hard for me to do the budget, for, and be fair to Ernie. I don't, I don't know what he has in store totally, I know what some of his plans are. But we, if we need to move money, that's, we can move money out of other line items to cover fuel, so, yeah.
And just to add, when I sent the budget worksheet out to Commissioner Roberts and to Judge Hall, they're both going to retire at the end of this year, and I recommended to both of them that they work with the sole nominee for both of those positions to make any recommendations, and I know that Commissioner Roberts did, and I talked to Mr. Asli yesterday, and he's done the same with Judge Hall, so. But that's fair, and I appreciate y'all doing that.
Yeah, well, twenty-eight, I think twenty-eight thousand, and like I said, that's still gonna, and it's gonna be hard on fuel, who knows? You know, are we all gonna be able to stay within those parameters? Probably not, not with it going up like it is. If gasoline's going up six dollars a gallon, what's, what's diesel gonna do? Diesels are definitely gonna go up even more, and we burn a lot of diesel. But then again, like I said, we, we can move some from other line items if necessary.
And then, so twenty-eight thousand's good?
Yes.
You'll let me know if you need to change that?
That's good.
Materials and supplies, was an increase from one seventy-six sixty-one to two hundred thousand?
Yeah, that, the, the difference in that is, and, and let me, let me go back on that. The one seventy-six sixty-one was because of a tractor that we had to buy. We dropped it to that one seventy-six sixty-one from two hundred and fifty thousand, was what, that was originally budgeted at. So, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't actually that. And bringing it in under that, we're gonna be close, we're gonna be close on that one for this year anyway. That's why I bumped it up to two hundred, because I know Ernie's gonna wanna come in and do, do some other work on roads and stuff, so. And like I said, we take that two hundred thousand, if there's, if they're in our budget as far as materials and supplies, if there's money left over in it, to go back and, you know, change it to the fuel and oil.
All right, and then there was an increase on cable and internet, I guess you just based that off of what?
What the charges are, yeah.
From seven fifty to one thousand and ninety-two?
Yeah, and that, that brought it, that's gonna be evened out as to what it is, what it's running.
Okay. And then you asked for an increase in travel and training from two thousand to thirty-five hundred, and then you asked for fifteen hundred.
Ernie's gonna have to go to extra schools.
Yeah, okay. So it's an overall, overall increase of thirty-four thousand one eighty-one in R and B four.
Right. Which should go down next year, Ernie?
Yeah, 'cause I'm gonna remind you of a statement you made, you said, Ernie's got it made, I've already overlaid all of the roads.
Oh, well, but, you know, honestly, and, and honestly, we, we, we have done really well with missing roads, and there are a few that are still left, and I do have some in contingency left that's not on here. So I, I will try to get some of the rest of them done, he won't, he'll be finished. Also, the, the other part of that is, we, we've been on a steady deal changing out the old culverts. Like Amanda said, we're, we're, we're changing out tin horns that are rusted out and, and concrete culverts that are separated and broken, and, and right now, we're working in Woodcrest, and Woodcrest is big, but we're knocking them out. And once, once all that's done, things are gonna come down.
Sounds good. Any more comments regarding the Roden Bridge four?
No, sir, just, I'd like to readdress my budget.
Sure, we'll go back to Roden Bridge two.
No, no really action taken.
Okay, go ahead.
So with the redistricting, my materials has not increased, nor has my personnel, and I just wanna bring that out. For the record, I added eighteen miles, and there's no consideration given for the additional mileage. Still the same challenges that three and four have, there's just no additional money and no additional personnel, so.
I would say along those lines, Judge and Court, that I don't feel like it's the responsibility of one commissioner to tell another commissioner how to run their department, and I don't wanna get into that at all, but we can't, we should, but we can't base our budgets on road miles because
Correct.
my miles is a lot higher than his, and his budget's higher than mine, so we can't do that. And I think we all have done a good job of maintaining our budgets. This redistricting and budgeting and all this stuff leads to a, a topic that this court is probably totally against, and that's a in the road system. So we can't base our, our budgets off of road miles. If that was the case, then my money should be leaving, going to your department, really.
Well, he's.
Because you got, you got.
You'll go for that.
You got eighteen miles on my roads, you know?
Yeah, well, my thing is.
You're still making some of those, right?
I think at the end of the
Small.
I think at the end of the budget hearing, maybe we should have just looked at, like, what you're spending per mile. All of us, and I think that you'll see that two and three have far less money than one and four per mile of road to spend. And so while we have the most, we have the least per mile to spend on maintenance.
I don't understand how we couldn't base it by road miles if we have more to maintain.
It should, let me, let me rephrase that. It should be based on road miles, but according to what we're doing right now, it's not.
Not really. And, and it gets to what you said.
Because if it was done correctly, I know Alvin gave you a person.
Yeah.
I gave Chris a boom or, which, that's mine.
We're gonna have to say that.
If, if we were going by road miles, the county didn't take on any additional miles.
Right.
Y'all's precinct did, so that means money should be coming out of my budget, going to his, and money out of his, going to yours. If we done it right.
Which is, I did with, I did that with an employee, I gave her an employee.
But when we asked for additional money, because you took on more road miles, it should come out of his, his depart, uh, his budget, not, not overall.
I agree with that, but with inflation and the cost of materials and gas and everything going up, I think that's kinda hard to do without adding additional funds.
There's definitely challenges, but all good statements.
I agree. Any other comments regarding any of the Roden Bridge budgets?
I'm retiring.
That's what I hear. All right. Move on to item F, Mr. Score. All right, we'll just start at the top. Financial administration has gone over budget for the past two years, has been budgeted at one oh three five thirty. I'm sorry, it didn't go over the last two years, but it went over last year, one oh five six oh eight, so I increased that to one hundred and ten thousand. And I did not discuss that with the auditor or the treasurer, it's just an amount that I came up with. And if either one of them wanna make a comment, they can, and if not, we can talk about it later and just see if you feel that's a good number.
And what's that, what does that go to fund?
What was that fund? Ms. McWilliams, can you refresh my memory? Financial administration? Oh, one oh four oh one one seventeen, financial administration, now with the commissioners' court budget?
I think that's your outside audit, and
Which is around forty, if I'm not mistaken, maybe a little more, forty-four.
Any with the bond issue, or not bond, but the certificates of obligation, anything in that?
I'm sure that's under the debt services. But when we buy checks and things like that, doesn't it come out of there?
Sir.
When we buy checks and pay interest and
I think it all comes, now in May, the four oh one, one, two, three is the one that I mostly deal with.
I think Candace, Angela's fixing to help me, go ahead.
I think Angela can.
It's our outside audit and our financial software and our single audit fees.
Yeah, any, I guess, are you talking about grants that have single audits?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So one hundred and ten, do you feel like that's a good number?
Um, our single audit fees will probably go up some because we have so much more grants, but I'm hoping that maybe we can look into some of the grants, hoping it'll offset some of the costs.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the next few line items, I left the same. The next one that I changed was the victim of crime line item, I reduced it from twenty-five hundred to one thousand. We've had no expenses there the last two years. The line items that I have an asterisk beside, once we decide on salaries, those will be adjusted at that time. So just for instance, the one that says dispatchers, that is the county's portion. We have three dispatchers, y'all will recall that we share with other entities, which are the, two of the E S Ds, and then the three cities that the sheriff dispatches for. And the county picks up a portion of that, this year it's one hundred and eighteen thousand four ninety-four is what's budgeted there. Last year, we spent eighty-nine four oh five, and the reason that's different is because when he has a vacancy, that number, that amount goes down. But our liability there this year is one eighteen four ninety-four, and if we give a raise, that'll go up, and so that'll be adjusted. So no change made yet, but it's coming, hopefully. On the next line item. On the, uh, next line item that I made any change to, that was the, uh, health insurance Cobra administrat, uh, admin. And, uh, I bumped it up from two thousand and ten to twenty two hundred, just because we did grow over last year by a little bit.
And what does the health insurance Cobra admin do?
I don't know, something we gotta pay. Is that for, uh, what is that for, does anybody know?
Is it administrative fees? That we pay for people to be on Cobra?
So, if somebody goes on Cobra, they have an, an amount they pay, and we're charging administrative fee for that?
Well, as far as the administrative fee for every individual, it works through county.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Judge, can I say something on that?
Sure.
That is something I am planning on talking to Orlando tomorrow about, because, um, they will actually blue cross, oh, sorry, blue cross Blue Shield will actually take that over for us, so we don't have to be over Cobra, and I was told that it's possibly first. But I cannot find anything out about it until we, um, get all of our renewal rates, but I will be speaking to Orlando about that.
Thank you, if you find that we can reduce that, let me know.
It, it currently costs us somewhere on average a hundred and sixty dollars a month, but, uh, in twenty twenty one, we had some additional charges. It looks like, I have to look at the detail.
Hundred and sixty a month?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this should be good. Y'all have any questions about any of these, please let me know. The, uh, next item that I made a change to was the health insurance retirees, that's been running just under sixty thousand a year for the past two years. So, I reduced that from eighty thousand to sixty thousand. All these library contracts with the cities, they stay the same. Pauper expenses. The last two years, they ran just under sixty five thousand, we budgeted ninety thousand, I reduced it to eighty thousand. It could possibly come down some more, but I'd like to wait till we get closer to finalizing the proposed budget to make a decision on that. Telephone expense has been, uh, under twenty five thousand the past couple of years, but we're budgeting thirty five, I lowered it to thirty, and I can possibly bring that down to twenty five, I just wanna talk to Misty before I do that. Bidding and notices, we've already gone up over budget this year by thirty one dollars and sixty cents, so I bumped it up two hundred and fifty dollars, from thirty five hundred to thirty seven fifty. And Misty, if you think that's not enough, let me know. On our insurance, I, uh, increased that from two hundred and eighty eight to three hundred and thirty thousand, we've already spent two ninety nine this year. And we don't have our, uh, we don't have our renewal rates in yet, and I don't think, I don't think those come in until after we set a proposed budget. Seems like late July, early August, is that right? So, if we can change that between the proposed budget and the final budget, we will.
That's not a bad price considering what all we've covered.
On insurance deductibles and claims, our, uh, our deductible is twenty five thousand per claim, and we've already got two this year, and we're possibly looking at a third. So, I increased it from twenty five thousand to fifty thousand. This line item in red that says fifty nine nineteen, you'll see there's a note there that was made by Ms. McKenny that added seven hundred and fifty dollars to that line item, and that covers the, um, we're fixing to go to, uh, in the county court, to an electronic judgment system, and, and that'll require some equipment and a annual renewal of seven hundred and fifty dollars a year to change that software where it goes all electronic. We should save that money in paper and tumbler, I hope, prob, probably more than that. Case management software, uh, was sixty thousand, I lowered it to fifty thousand, I know that we have the, uh, iJury that we're gonna have to pay, uh, a, uh, developer to make some changes to that, and then we have the plugin that goes with it to send the, uh, emails and messages and phone calls out to people. I don't think it'll run anywhere near fifty thousand, but I'm gonna make sure we're covered, and it will also be covered if there's any other changes to the, uh, county or district court case management software over the next year. Again, if we can lower that before the proposed budget's finalized, I'll lower it. And then contingency general, we normally try to keep that around two hundred and fifty thousand, we lowered it a few times over the past few years, I've got it back at two hundred and fifty thousand for next year.
And what do we pay out of that?
Uh, anytime that we move money from the contingency general to pay for budget amendments, it comes out of that line item. It's an overall reduction of fifty six thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars for the Commissioner's Court budget, and if we can lower it anymore, we will. Anybody have any comments regarding that? County clerk, here's the big one. Uh, Connie and I sat in and worked on her budget the other day, I didn't apparently make any, uh, change any of her amounts to blue, so I could be ready to tell you about it today, but I see one. Office equipment rentals, she lowered that from fifty three hundred to five thousand. Uh, there's a couple others. Did you lower some others?
At least one more, but I
Yeah, miscellaneous, she lowered it from twenty five hundred to two thousand.
Also, Judge, um, we can use the internet as well, so if you wanna change the law book to zero, we can do, we can take at least four hundred more off.
Why don't you talk to Misty first and see what law book she's ordering for you, and let's make sure before we do that, and if, if you find that you can, let me know, and I'll change it.
Okay.
So, a lot of those are on standing order, we need to make sure we keep some of the whole things, so they don't just automatically seem to be, if anyone wants to get some law books, probably incident.
It's possible she may be getting a law book that goes to someone else, and so, let's just make sure before we cancel that.
Okay.
But the county clerk, overall reduction she made to the fiscal twenty three budget was eighteen hundred dollars. And if y'all need to see any particular line item that I scrolled past, just let me know. Connie, anything you wanna say?
Um.
We wanna address her moving her money?
We can discuss it, but I don't think we can take action on it today, can we? You're asking to do this for the next budget year anyway, right?
That's correct.
We can, let's discuss that.
Well, I'm all for it, I always have been, uh.
She's got the money in, in what she's, uh, what, what she was making as the chief deputy versus what, uh, Tracy's making as, as the chief deputy? She's got the money in that line item where she wanted to move a dollar and twenty seven cents, is that right?
She not asking for an increase in her budget, she using money she has, I don't know how the other court, other commissioners feel, but I don't have a problem.
And that's going to the election board?
It is, and let me just say, Alyssa does so much in that office when it comes to elections. Without her, um, it's hard to do, and she's, she's very great, that's what she does.
Say that, I heard far less complaining this year.
Well, thank you.
So, I think she did an amazing job.
I had a meeting last week with the E S D six, uh, president and his lawyer, and they both, uh, gave high compliments to Alyssa, and I've heard them from other people too, so.
She is a true asset to Horton County, I mean, nobody realizes what all she does, and, I mean, I do now that I have become county clerk, and it's amazing what she does.
I've actually had election workers come to me and ask for her to get a raise, because she has done such a tremendous job while she is doing the elections, so, um, I'm all for it.
Sound like it's a done deal, unless, these, sound good?
Thank y'all very much.
So, if you'll work with the auditor to make that change, so we get that plugged in?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Now, is that effective immediately or October?
I'll be October first. Uh, veteran services? I don't have any numbers plugged in yet, let me look.
I don't have a sheet on it, man.
Sir?
Can I even make a comment about what, um, Connie just stated?
Okay.
Which Miss Freeman is apparently not being coded to the general fund, she's being coded to the preservation fund, so she'll have to, to do some transfers.
That, uh, that vacancy that she has in her office, could she just move Alyssa to that before the end of this budget?
Yes, sir, she'll have, I will change for me, and we'll have to, we'll have to have a discussion about that.
If I remember correctly, when I
To, to, um, zero, zero, seven, and not zero, one, oh.
Okay. Yes, sir. Did you have two under that preservation plan?
Do have two, um, I haven't replaced anybody, I'm trying not to do that. When Tracy moved up, I'm trying not to replace that position, um, but after discussing with the judge and him helping me with this being my first year, um, we agreed that maybe we need to leave that money in there, cause I haven't been through a general election yet, to make sure that I can get by without having to hire anybody. So, if I can, then, that I won't replace that position in my office.
So, I think you could just leave that vacancy in the preservation fund and move Alyssa to the general fund, is that right, Agent?
I'm assuming that maybe we can have a discussion where she can potentially take one from Forrest that is coded to the general fund, move it to the preservation fund, and then move it Miss Freeman to the, um, general fund.
Okay, all right, she's gonna talk to you about it. I didn't print your budget worksheet, I'm sorry, so let's just go over it, it's not, uh, won't take long.
Office supplies reduced to five hundred?
Got it, telephone?
Um.
I'm sorry, mileage reimbursement, not telephone.
Yeah, um, zero, because I don't, um, I'm not traveling locally, and that's what we had discussed a while back when we put that in place.
And you don't think you'll need to over the next year?
I don't think so, um, a lot of my veterans, we started, um, if I'm not face to face with them, or meet them in Brookshire or whatever, um, it's email over the phone, and we're able to do that. Unless it was, um, unless we move it all for travel and training, which, that's what I'm trying to find out. The T B C, Texas Veterans Commission, really hasn't come back with any training that they're gonna start having since COVID. Um, but the other groups throughout the state of Texas, I tried to go with one last year, and we backed out because of COVID exposure, and, you know, just leaving home or whatever, we backed out from that, and I paid that back, uh, at the last minute, but um, I'm hoping to get a little more training and travel in the next coming years, so, um, I would like to leave the travel and training at five hundred. Like I said, the mileage reimbursement for local around here, that can go away, but if you wanna add it to the other, that's, that's up to y'all.
Well, what I did was I, I made the mileage reimbursement zero as you requested, and leaving travel and training at five hundred, is that enough?
Yes, sir. I'll let you know if it comes, if it's different, but it was enough in the past.
Anytime you have to travel for the county, you can take a full vehicle, we have two now, and hopefully next year, we'll get a third one, we'll see.
Okay, the office equipment rentals is a Xerox six fifty seven, that's not changed.
Okay.
And then miscellaneous, um, I'd like to keep that at five hundred, and that would also cover the, the travel and training or whatever, if it, if it comes to it.
Okay, so that's an overall reduction to the budget of a hundred and forty three dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I've also, I'd like to add, I've been working with Mike and Wayne, um, through the wall, I still cannot fax. That is still an issue, but we've set up, uh, Ring Central on my computer, so hopefully it's, it's gonna be like a trial run, I don't know if you've been updated on it. Um, but I'm going to try to do electronic faxing, um, and they've also set it up with an electronic pen, uh, because normally whenever I fill out paperwork for a veteran, it's more than fifteen to thirty pages for a signature fax, and I shred it.
Okay.
So, if I can go completely electronic, um, I think that will, that will be great, and I don't keep files anymore, there's no more filing cabinets, none of that.
Okay.
Um, and so, with the office supplies, uh, I wanted to get, I'll begin with, um, Misty on canceling possibly my Xerox subscription, whenever I'm able to cancel it, um, and just going with a straight printer, cartridge, whatever, because it won't be that much if I can go fully electronic.
Okay.
So, that is the goal.
Sounds good.
And I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
The TV, um, we have not visited that, I would like to try to get that back up and running, I believe it was struck by lightning and destroyed.
Okay.
Somehow, um, but I would love to get that back up and running, because the, the veterans' display, the photos and everything, that was a big part of the courthouse, and then when we moved it to make it look a little bit neater, I would really like to get that back up and running, and I think the TV was purchased through Commissioner's Court.
If you will, uh, update your display, that you get that ready, uh, the TV will be replaced by the end of June.
Okay.
All right.
We'll get to work on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And she's another one that gets rave reviews for my veterans.
Yeah.
It wasn't like that before you got in there, so you've done an amazing job.
Thank you.
I agree. Any other comments regarding the veteran services budget? If not, we'll move on to floodplain administration.
Alex said we could have his entire budgets.
Entire budget, he sent it to me Friday, but I didn't key it in, so I'm gonna do it now, I should've done this yesterday. Eleven hundred for office supplies, one thousand for fuel and oil. Do you think that you need to keep a thousand in there? You've spent eighty five dollars this year.
No, sir, uh, I handed you the one, and I, and I talked to Amanda about this, cause she had some good advice to give. I wanted to be able to cut my budget, um, because of what's happened. Uh, office supplies, I'd like to cut it down to eight hundred.
Okay.
Um, and I was gonna talk to you about fuel and oil and the maintenance of the vehicle. Can I put the vehicle back in the pool, it would be cheaper just to pay me by mileage, I'm not driving that. If you look at year to date on the fuel I put in that car, it's eighty five dollars.
Yes, sir.
So, I was asking Amanda her advice in that as well, and, and she said we could probably cut it, cut that out, and just put me on, I mean, basically mileage.
Okay, yeah, I think we can do that, so, uh, I'll ask Candace to do that, cause if I add a line item, I may mess everything up, so Candace, if you will, uh, add a line item to this budget for mileage reimbursement, and, uh, let's put five hundred dollars in here, do you agree with that, Alex?
Yes, sir.
Then you have another pull call.
Yeah, and there's our third pull call, and we'll change the fuel and oil to zero. Professional fees are at sixteen thousand, and we've already spent seventeen two eighty five fifty seven this year. Now, I think you billed the develop, developers for that, have we just not gotten paid back, or?
Yes, sir, I turned in almost three thousand today.
Okay.
Uh, it, and that's coming back in, I'm gonna keep that at sixteen thousand, because the L G A services is still gonna be the same as last year.
Okay. On travel and training, you have fifteen hundred, and you're asking for fifteen hundred next year?
I'm gonna drop that down to one thousand.
Okay.
Most of the stuff that I'm doing, all my certificates are, I'm doing online, the smaller certificates.
I'm gonna zero out the auto maintenance and repair?
Yes, sir.
On, uh, office equipment rentals?
I keep that the same, I still have the Xerox.
Okay. Miscellaneous, five hundred?
I've never used it in a year and a half, so.
Two hundred?
Yes, sir.
Software license and support, I think you lowered that to five thousand, didn't you?
Uh, I didn't use as far as, uh.
Looks like it was five thousand this year, and you wrote in five thousand for next year on your worksheet.
As far as software license, uh.
I think it's that road and bridge software, it's split between six depart, five departments, and I think you're
Yeah, it's that, uh, I work.
Yeah.
It's, it's joint, so, I don't know if we can, I'd have to give the, Misty and see if we can reduce that.
I think it's the same next year as it was this year, so we'll just leave that at five thousand.
Okay.
So, that's an overall decrease of thirty six hundred in your budget.
Yes, sir, that's what I, I had here, I've been working on it last week. I just didn't wanna give you this one and never be able to see it again, and you, you understand?
I do, I appreciate it. All right, any other thing, uh, comments you wanna make, or members of the court?
Um, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Item J is technology. Why didn't I key all these in? I thought I did. Let's just go over it, office supplies was eight hundred last year, you're asking for eight hundred next year?
Yes, sir.
Travel and training was a thousand, you're asking to keep that at a thousand?
Yes, sir.
You think you need a thousand?
Uh, we haven't done any training or travel, but my techs do, do need to get some training, I like to get them, uh, diverse with Office three sixty five, since we have one to that platform.
Okay.
Uh, that, that class, uh, is usually held by tech for free, but also we're gonna have to pay for hotels and stuff, I'm not sure.
Contracted services, we're at thirty two thousand, and you're requesting to keep that the same, is that right? Contracted services were at thirty-two thousand, and you're requesting to keep that the same, is that right?
Yes, sir. These, these are for outside services, uh, that cover our antivirus and, and all the stuff on our computers that we, we have, uh. He has not increased as of this time, so let's keep it that.
Alright, and then on computers and parts, it was fifty thousand, and you requested to keep that the same?
Yes, sir.
For the record, he didn't request to keep it the same. He requested to increase it because there's some uh server needs and what have you, and I asked him to lower it back to fifty thousand, and he disgruntledly did so.
It wasn't disgruntled, it was.
And then miscellaneous at five hundred?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so your budget would stay the same for next year? Other than any salary increases? Which we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet, but we're going to. Any comments regarding the technology budget?
So it's staying the same?
Yes, sir. Does anybody have any technology needs that Aaron may not know about that we need to make sure that we talk about either now or in the near future? Y'all took good care of us last week, Aaron. Thank y'all.
Thanks, sir.
Except for faxing, Candace, you said.
So we went uh a different direction with her fax. Hopefully she'll be completely uh electronic and have no need for paper or pens or anything. Uh, if that works with her office, then we may can do that in some other offices.
Okay.
There is a cost on the, the backend of going fully electronic, such as the, the cost for the Ring Central V fax. Currently right now, it's a trial error basis, and we're gonna see if it works, and if it does work, then we'll look at purchasing V fax for all the departments that can legally do V fax and we'll rock them up there.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you. You guys will just stay up here.
Yes, sir.
What's that account number for emergency management? Five forty-one?
Yes, sir.
Here's what I'd like to do on emergency management. Y'all have his budget worksheet in your packets, and this one I did key. But what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the members of the court and with Mr. Tupper, is uh hold off and postpone this one so that we can look at the previous years. Reason it's not in here is because he's been on a grant all these years. Y'all might remember, I sent you an email from Chief Kidd, dated March thirty-first, where they took that away from us. So uh that budget had to be moved over to the uh general fund, and that's being done now for fiscal year twenty-three. And I would like to get with Candace and let's plug in some figures for the last few years, and then look at the, the proposed budget for next year.
You did key those numbers in, but those are the original numbers, not what we reduced it at.
You reduced it?
Yes, sir.
So he's asking for uh a lot less than what's on here. So let's just leave it, and let's postpone it and come back to it if that's okay with everyone else. One thing I do want to bring up today, so I don't spring it on anybody later. He's got a seven-year-old vehicle that I would like to transfer to the maintenance department. The vehicle in the maintenance department is an old five model, I think. It's got some transmission issues, and I'd like I hope nobody that I've traded that to hears that, but I'd like to trade that in and move his vehicle to the maintenance department and replace his vehicles, so that'd be one thing that we'll talk about.
If we can, I'd like to make that a motion to start immediately because it takes months
Yeah.
to get it, and then that way we can go and take action.
Well, we'd have to put it on the, uh, agenda as an action item. Okay. Well, we'll, we can do that. And when we handle his budget, I'll put an action item on there for that if y'all want to do.
I think so, because it's.
Isn't it good with one of them little smart cars?
Yes, sir. Anything that gets me to the emergency and the time of action.
I want to see you get in it.
It's, getting in is not hard, getting out is hard.
Getting out, I agree. I was gonna see if I could get in there, and then give us one of them gang border trucks and just send the bill to the state.
Right?
Yeah.
They'd never notice it, would they?
I don't think so. Alright, so we're going to uh table item five K, and we'll take that up at the uh June fourteenth or June twenty-eighth budget workshop.
Thank you.
Yes. Alright, speaking of, our next budget workshop is on the fourteenth. That's our next regular meeting. At the end of that meeting, we will also address the three fifty-six district court, the eighty-eight district court, the district clerk, all six of the justices of the peace, and the treasurer. Does anybody have any comments they want to make? Does anybody have any discussion of any item without taking action on item number six?
I did, Judge. I'd like to say something.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to let the court know and everybody else know that uh we are now, our records are now um linked to our website. There's a link there, you can go, so they're online. Uh, there was no charge for my office. L G S did that free of charge. We still get our dollar page copy. And there's, if you do it like for title companies and stuff like that, there is a monthly subscription fee of about sixty-five dollars. But it doesn't torch you anything to go in there and look around.
So land men and what have you can do that electronically now? They're gonna have to come in?
Right, run home.
Great. Awesome. Anybody else have anything they want to say? If not, have a motion by Commissioner Kirk, you know, second to by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank y'all for your time today.
Chris, that wasn't too bad. You got a good job, but no.